They almost expect it to be done.
Yeah.
And they don't want to have a technical review there.
Right.
I'm sorry, Daddy.
That's a long way to.
We knew what you meant.
You know, this was thirty long terms. First one is thirty.
Mine was last one, she was in a huge campus and, yeah.
We're great. I agree. Which we can review, it's not to say we're not concerned or some issues.
Right. But I think in terms of environmental. You know, it's like a lot of it's just more for me to talk about.
Right.
Just because you're like, there's so much wiggle around. It's like, but.
But he sent one of the letters that came and was complaining. Right on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July first, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the planning board of the village of Dobbs Ferry. We have six items on our agenda tonight, but before we, before we start the agenda, I'd like to introduce two new consultants that will be assisting the village and the planning board. As we go forward this year. Valerie Mastrada, who's going to be working as a planning consultant. And Anthony Oliveri, who will be our engineering consultant for the village. So, welcome to both of them.
Thank you.
Nice having you with us and delighted you're here with us tonight. The first item on our agenda, as usual, is to adopt the planning board minutes for the previous meeting, and that would be the June three, two thousand twenty-one meeting. I've read the minutes and have no corrections. Any other? Any other board members have any comments or corrections?
Yeah.
But I missed meetings, so I have to.
You missed, you missed the meeting.
I was not.
You were not at the meeting, okay. I would move then that we approve the minutes of the meeting of June three, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Item passes. Right. Agenda item number two on our agenda is one eighty-five Ashford Avenue, which is a continuation of the public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new multi-use building.
Can you share a screen from that computer? It's like logged into, to Zoom.
It's, oh, and then I should share a screen though. Okay, that's what I thought. I thought we were gonna go on the Zoom meeting after the meeting, right? Um, I just want to get these open for you and then I'm gonna. See that the way here.
Paper plans for this. He never bought this high.
Oh, yeah. Huge, yeah. Yeah. Especially if it was a zoom in. We're just. On the tree right there. Tree. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good evening. I'm Christina Griffin. I'm a principal of CGA's Studio Architects. I'm here with Suzanne Levine, project architect, Andrew Cortese, owner. And we're here to present the latest drawings for a proposed mixed-use building at one eighty-five, one ninety-one Ashford Avenue. We have read the memos from. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we've read the memos from, uh, uh, your village planner Valerie Minastro and then also from, um, your village engineer, um, Ralph Rockfield. And, uh, we have, um, addressed almost all the items, and I'm gonna go through that with you. Most of them were relatively minor. Just get started here. One of the comments was that we were asked to add some more information to our zoning data table. Um, we have shown calculation for the impervious surfaces, uh, and the pervious surfaces that includes our planted areas and our pervious pavers. Uh, we also added a calculation showing, um, the, uh, the amount of portable housing units required, which is one, and also the area of affordable housing that meets the requirement for being at least eighty percent of the typical unit size or average unit size. This is our latest site plan. We have, um, we're actually showing you now, uh, five potential of, uh, on-street parking spaces. Um, we were asked to, to do this at the last meeting. This is really just a visual to give the village. Um, we have already, um, provided all the parking that's required for the number of units that we have on-site plus one. So, uh, we understand that these on-street parking spaces will help for, um, business coming to potential retail, uh, spaces and businesses, so, um. But I think at this point, the village has to look at seeing how that can be, um, developed. Uh, we also, um, I think we have in our letter, we made very clear that we have to take off one tree. Um, and that's simply because, um, if I can get my cursor over there. Can't seem to do that. Um, that's over by the ramp and that's, um, we really looked hard at that. We have really maximized the, um, amount of green buffer areas and we've even added a few new trees in the front. So, uh, we've added plant beds, uh, on the, um, east area here on each, and we've added also on each side of the driveway opening. So we really have tried to, um, provide as much green buffer area as we can. Uh, but we'd like to remove that one tree because it allows us to have eleven parking spaces. Uh, and actually, you know, depending on the business that goes in the retail, you, we might need one more. And also we have the ramp for the bicycle storage down below over there, and we have an area where the snow removal can be placed. And also we need some access, um, driveway clearance for that last car to get out the parking space. I think on this plan, I, I think those are the extent of the changes on our site plan. We also, this is our roof plan that we submitted, and that's because, uh, we were asked to add dimensions so that we can have clearly show, um, where the bulkhead, uh, is located on the roof. And of course, that's important because, um, we've designed a building so that this bulkhead should be hardly visible from the street. Uh, we also have a bulkhead calculation to show that the bulkhead is nine point seven square, nine point seven percent of the roof area. Our elevations change just slightly. Um, we're showing a, um, parapet wall above. It's, um, it's a stucco wall and it has, it's thirty-six inches high with the six-inch rail, six-inch railing above. And, and this meets the, um, Dobbs Ferry code for the height of a parapet. Um, and that's shown on all the elevations. I think um, on the next elevation is the same change for the parapet on top. We're showing also on the west elevation here, dash lines to show how we're removing a portion of the old building, just to make that clear. Uh, this was determined to be, um, an item that would not need a variance because we're actually reducing the non-conformity of the old building. And the main reason we're doing that is so that we can have windows for the units. We have to pull it back, uh, at least five feet from the lot line. Uh, this elevation shows the same, um, parapet detail. And on the north elevation, um, it's very little changed, just the parapet. And also I want to point out that we have, uh, quite a few windows, uh, over here at this unit above the parking. But, uh, there is a comment about light, but this is on the north facade, probably wouldn't have a lot of, uh, sunlight. So it's, but it does still have natural light and there are more windows on, in this unit than other ones on this north facade. So, we are keeping this design. And, uh, there were also, uh, comments about, um, the, uh, environmental assessment forum and our, uh, engineer, they're very minor, uh, is in the process of addressing those. Um, we provided the coastal assessment forum. Certainly minor comments about drainage. And I think uh, I guess we're at a point where we'd like to know if you have any questions and if you might consider making any decision.
Well, I think, I think, um, you, as usual, have been very responsive to the comments from the board. And we appreciate that, of course. Um, I think, uh, other board members have additional questions or comments. I think this would be a good time to, to ask them, but I, I and I think, you know, if the engineering comments, uh, you know, are underway and will, will be done and that, that's usually covered in the resolution anyway, that it's subject to, to those being done. We are, we are, we're not prepared to take, uh, action tonight, but, um, I think, uh, I think we can, is there? I should ask, first of all, is there someone here that wishes to speak on this in the audience?
We have to open the public hearing first, or?
Yeah.
We're continued from, the public hearing is continuing.
I need, I need to move it.
Yeah, might as well.
Move to open the public hearing, second, second, okay, all in favor?
I agree. Chairman, we do have two people on Zoom that have their hands.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Michael, can you hear us? Michael Stein, can you hear us?
Yes, I was just trying to unmute. My apologies.
Okay.
Good evening, Michael Stein of Hudson Engineering. Answer whether there are specific questions or?
He, he's from the engineers.
Oh.
Hudson Engineering.
Oh. No. No, he has answers, not questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more. Is Dom Petrazelli also from the? Dom, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, this was, I'm waiting for the other, uh, uh, the other individual for the sixteen Main Street. I apologize, my, placed, uh, my hand up on this.
It's okay, no worries.
Yeah. Trying to work with this.
Well, that being the case, I, I would move, uh, to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, um, I think we're then prepared to take action in our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to draft a resolution?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to, uh, have me draft a resolution to that effect of referring it back over to the planning board for the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah.
Please.
And would we need to wait for that resolution before we go to the architectural historical review board?
No, no.
No, okay.
Please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, item number two, one eighty-five Ashford, uh, no, one fifty-six Palisade Street. Continuation of a public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new multifamily building. This, uh, this has an interesting twist to it as people, people on the board here would know.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering that I defer to Valerie whether or not you want to say anything before this presentation about the work that you've been doing in Palisade Street.
I think, um, if you want, we can talk about it at the end and maybe have him just present, because they have a number of different scenarios at this point.
I think she's about.
Yeah.
Do we have to go back, share the screen again?
And then maybe talk about if any of them sit.
It's a little, there's a little delay with the share of the screen on the Zoom for some reason. Try to go. It's coming up, but it's, um, grayed out. The share is grayed out. Get unshared after the last presentation, so I think maybe we need permission to share again. Okay, I think that works.
I wonder, can I open this? Yeah, I just, I just want to see if I, if I, I want this open. Yeah, I wonder why. Oh. Again, just. Okay.
Again, uh, I'm Christina Griffin and our firm was asked by, uh, Michael Lang, who's here from, uh, one fifty-six Palisade LLC. Uh, he's partnered with that company to take a fresh look at how we would, uh, possibly develop this property. Uh, we're, it's, we, uh, submitted these drawings as a continuation of the review. And that's because, uh, we, uh, looked carefully at all the drawings and the zoning analyses that were done over the last, uh, several months. And we are actually using that, considering that information and going from there to look at some other ideas. I know the last scheme was a seven-unit, um, multifamily building. Uh, so we are familiar with the site and, um, I just brought some photos in case we have to refer to them. This is our zoning data, uh, chart. Um, on the chart, we're actually showing three schemes that we want to show you today. Um, one is as of right, another one is a, uh, scheme for a reduced lot size. And then, another one is, uh, a scheme that we find an ideal, uh, layout and design for the building. Uh, and I'll describe, you know, how we, we meet or not meet the zoning code. By the way, when I, uh, the scheme A is as of right, but it's based on the proposed zoning changes for the MDR dash two zone. Um, we thought we'd start with that, assuming that you might, that the village might be approving those changes. So, this is our first scheme. So we took a look at seeing, um, what kind of building we could get if we use the, uh, latest proposed, uh, zoning, um, requirements, which for this size lot, it's because it's between seventy-five hundred and ten thousand square feet. There's a sliding scale requirement, and that happens to be thirty-two point eight percent lot coverage. So we took thirty-two point eight percent of the lot, came up with the building. That's about two thousand eight forty-six square feet. This building meets all the setbacks, which in, in the latest zoning chart is twenty feet on the front, ten feet on the sides, twenty-five feet in the rear. Um, the maximum, uh, building height is thirty-seven feet. So we're showing that for the scheme, and this is showing six two-bedroom, two-bath units. On this scheme also, I want to point out, uh, we are planning to have garage and parking down below. And one thing that, um, we're, we would like to consider is how we can handle the excavation in the back. Scheme A will require the most amount of excavation because with the twenty-foot setback, we have to push it back into the hill. And we end up with a retaining wall that's about nine feet in the back. So after we took a look at this scheme, we went and took a, a look at a different scheme. We decided to see if we, um, oh, I'm sorry, I want to finish reviewing the floor plans for scheme A. Before we go to scheme B, I just want to point out that these units are two-bedroom, two-bath, but they're actually undersized, in my opinion, for, uh, comfortable, uh, units that have handicap adaptable bathrooms and have, and they're deficient in storage and, and also sizes of the room. So, uh, and the units are, one is, uh, twelve, I think, thirty-four square feet, and the other one is twelve sixty-seven square feet. In the garage, we are showing, uh, six parking spaces, one per unit. We have a handicap, one handicap parking space to meet code. And we are, uh, we will be allowed three, uh, on-street spaces as a credit for the existing two-family house that's there, according to Ed Manley. Uh, so after we looked at this, we looked at another scheme. I'm going to show you scheme B. Now, scheme B is based on the idea that the new zoning code allows forty percent of lots that are under seventy-five hundred square feet. So if we reduce the size of a lot to seven thousand four hundred ninety-nine square feet, we get, uh, we can, we can do forty percent lot coverage and a building footprint that's three thousand square feet. We've added about a hundred and, uh, fifty square feet to the footprint. So we wanted to take a look at what would be our ideal scheme. So with that extra square footage, we know we can get more comfortable units. We also pushed this building towards the front of the street, um, with a twelve-foot setback. Because we know in the past that your board was looking at, uh, prevailing, um, front yard. That was similar, which means it's similar to the front yards are there and the average is about eight feet for this side of the street. And, uh, by pushing the building forward, it, it actually reduces the amount of excavation we need to do, reduces the retaining wall in the back to under five feet instead of nine feet. But we also decided that we, if we, if we wanted to do this and bring the building forward, it would be good to raise the building up a little to reduce the excavation, but, um, and also get handicap access to the garage, um, to the lower level. Um, but we, uh, in doing this, we know that that would raise the front facade. So we decided we would drop to five units instead of six, step the building back so that the front facade would be thirty feet six from the, uh, center line of the curb, and the rear facade would be forty-one feet. I can't quite see it. I'm sorry. I think it's, uh,
Also thirty-six feet or so.
And we would step the building back and jog it back so that the fifth unit would be, uh, recessed from the front facade. And that way you would reduce the, uh, sense of mass and have a scale that would be more in keeping with the buildings around it. But the overall height is actually forty-one feet higher than the thirty-seven, it's four feet higher than the maximum thirty-seven feet in the current code. Now, the drawback in this plan is we use a seventy-five hundred square feet lot is we know that there's a very limited space in the bank for storm drainage. And, uh, I consulted Michael Stein, the engineer, and, uh, we don't have any perk tests yet. So we really don't know what we're going to need, but this is the only location for it. So we're very concerned that if we went with this scheme, we would have, um, we may not be able to get the number of units, may not have the, like, clearances around the units to the, um, carpet lines. So then we developed scheme C. Uh, actually, sorry, I'm going to show you just quickly the layout of the scheme B by going with, uh, forty percent lot coverage, which is a three thousand square foot footprint. We're able to get the units up to, uh, thirteen thirty-four for unit one and thirteen fifty for unit two. This made these, uh, rooms more comfortable, um, more marketable. Uh, we even have more storage and even a mechanical space behind the elevator. Also, we, you know, for five units, um, we can still have six parking spaces in the basement, which is a better ratio, even better than one-to-one with three spots on this, on the street. So for scheme C, we took the same, uh, plan and, uh, drawings that we did for scheme B. And we put it back on the current lot size, which is eight thousand six seventy-five square feet. And when we did that, we found out that our lot coverage is now thirty-four percent. And we're able to get all the, um, stormwater units, probably everything we need in the back. Um, it has all the desirable, uh, features that we were looking for, reducing excavation. Sorry. Pushing the building forward to reduce excavation, pushing it up also to reduce excavation, get handicap access into the lower level. And, um, you know, all the same elements of the scheme B, but just on a larger lot, which will, um, give us the storm drainage space we're looking for. So we actually have not done anything more than these simple site plans and floor plans because we really want to see what your comments are and see if we can find any direction before we go any further.
One, one quick question. One of the plans that we've previously looked at is you, when you look at the building, on the right-hand side, there was apparently some, uh, very extensive excavation required, and that was causing some concerns among the property owner, uh, in the adjacent building.
On this side, on the south side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see. Well, with the five-unit scheme, we probably can have a smaller garage because we only need eight total u, eight total spaces, three on the speed, street and only five. So, uh, we wouldn't have the building going underground to the right. And we would have the entire building on the side meet the ten-foot setback.
Okay. Yeah, it was the excavation that was required that was causing the concern.
Yes, we, we are aware of those concerns and many, there's many concerns, neighbors also, um, just cost, of course. Um, so that's why, um, our preferred scheme is this one where we raised the building up, but stepped it back and brought it forward. That reduces the amount of excavations.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michael, just want to point out that the deeper excavation is necessary if we want to, uh, meet through the, as a right scheme for this thirty-seven foot maximum height to the top of the roof.
Understand.
What's the unit count again in this?
Lot, uh,
in this?
Five.
C?
C is five. B and C are five. Um, we're, we're fine with five because we feel that, um, once you bring the building forward, raise it up, in order to reduce the mass, we would have a, only one unit on top, push it back and then make it, uh, approximately maybe like seventeen hundred square. And then make it approximately maybe like seventeen hundred square feet. Three bedroom to that.
So I have two thoughts and then, and then actually a question maybe for Valerie or maybe for our attorney. First of all, in terms of the front setback, as we're going to present in a, in a moment is, there was the, the, there's a twenty foot as a right setback, as you point out in code. But the design guidelines that we did, the character guidelines recognize, which, did you see those? By the way, the character guidelines for Palisades Street that we did? They're part of what you should review.
I, I only glanced at them and I will spend some time looking at them carefully.
Because the, in, because we sort of recognized that along Palisades Street, most of the buildings are actually closer to the sidewalk than the twenty feet. Now, if you want to be contextual, we had this idea of a ten to twelve foot, or I think maybe ten to fifteen foot deep transition zone where there would be other kind of elements. So the idea of pulling the building forward is, which I think was you also a feature of the previous schemes. I think makes a whole lot of sense for the reasons that that you point out. But the, the, the question I have, but it may be moot if C seems like it's, it's kind of, it's the preferred scheme is, is the kind of, I guess I'd like to know from my own education whether or not the kind of sleight of hand of making the site smaller by somehow legally defining it as a smaller site for the sake of doing an end around the coverage requirement. Like, I don't, I have no idea what the legality of it is. It certainly, that wouldn't be acceptable to me since the the idea of linking the overall building scale to the size of the site. I mean legally, you may have drawn a line in the air, but the site is still the size of the site. It's not like they're subdividing it and producing, you know, like taking a site that was big enough for two properties and make, and somehow dividing it that way. So I don't, that feels like a kind of a weird. In scheme B, that seems like a kind of a weird sleight of hand. I, I guess what my, I'm curious about is what is it about C that you think is, since I, in like my first impression is that also seems like the way to go. So I'm I'm curious what your, what you think the downside is to scheme C.
Downside. I usually want to talk about the upside, but
Why, why, I mean, what's giving you, like, why you wouldn't just say this is our preferred, like, what, what is it?
Well, only because of the history of the project. I, I wanted you to know that we really look analyzes very carefully. And I, I just don't know the entire history. And I'm not sure what all the objections might have been. So I really wanted to show you schemes rather than just say, this is the what we want and explain why. And we are not just doing a sleight of hand, we actually noticed that the new code, we thought was very strange, allowed forty percent for a smaller lot. And I guess I just wanted to show you that. But and it was just an exercise and we also just wanted to see what forty percent of the smaller lot would give us. And, and then we found that if we, you know, we kind of, we, we really lo- like this layout a lot. And it's can give us very comfortable units. So after we did that exercise, we went to that scheme. See, put the same building on the bigger lot and we're only at thirty four percent coverage.
Right, so in C you actually meet the coverage requirements.
Well, it's actually thirty two.
Or even you do better than that requirements. And you're, but the, the, the place where you may not meet what our future hope, expect to be adopted as a future requirement. It's the height to do this scheme, it has, you have to
Yes.
Go higher than the thirty seven foot recommended from the middle of the front, is that right or no?
It's thirty seven is the new code from the center line of the curb.
Or the property line.
The property line of the curb.
It's the same.
And we're, you know, that we stepped it, so the front facade is thirty six, but the entire height is forty one. It's really because we want to raise the building up out of the ground. Another thing we noticed is that we've seen on the previous schemes, large handicap ramps. And I, I think handicap accessibility, if you want to have someone come in without needing to come in a car, that you would get that handicap accessibility if you raised it up from the sidewalk into the lower level.
Right, which is great. I, I think that obviously when you get into, hopefully we'll, you'll be able to give you some really clear direction tonight. And, and when you develop it, you know, some of the proof will be in the sort of the elevation studies, obviously, and whatever three dimensional things you do. But one, one thing that came out in the, in, we were sort of in the previous iterations of this, another kind of feature of the site is that, which does affect the access issue, I guess, name of access issue is that the, the, there's typically a kind of a base to these buildings. You know, for most of them, not all of them. There's a little bit of like, you know, if it's a porch or whatever it is, it's some number of feet, three feet or five feet or whatever above the curb line. So I think one of the things in the design studies that we were pushing for was this idea that that first floor would be, you know, not right at grade level, but that the units would be sit on some kind of, you know, base along there. And I don't know. I can't tell from your time whether you're, it, it looks like there's because I, I assume that lowest level, I'm looking at the garage, right, the edge of the garage along the front property line. So presumably there's a kind of a, a base of some kind that would be designed that you would see from the street, right?
It, it's not so different, a little bit like two fifty five Broadway where you come in on the lower level. And we have a nice facade, but it's not a unit. And then you go up into the building for me to get to the units.
I mean, I don't know how people feel. I mean, I think scenes, scenes like the promising way to go here, but.
In the, in scheme A, I noticed that the floor, the level heights are nine feet. B and C, nine foot six.
Yes.
Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Just to make it more marketable. It's, and also actually every time we start with a, a preliminary project like this, we often end up reducing it anyway for our mechanicals. So we've got, we're, we want to be more realistic this time around. And go in with those kind of heights.
It's just more stuff in the ceiling. For mechanical.
Yeah, later on, it's, we, we often have to have soffits or we drop part of it or some, or all of it. And so we're I guess we could even thicken the floor maybe and change the ceiling height, but I think nine six is a desirable ceiling height. And we have very lar- we, very nice open kitchen dining room, living room. And it, it gives a nice sense of space. They aren't that big, the units. So in the, in the, in the big room, I think is, it's very, it's desirable.
Can I say, Christina, in speaking to the front yard setback? That Did I scare anybody? So, so the code allows for an alternate minimum front yard setback in prevailing calculations. You don't have to or probably should not be that twenty feet back. You know, you, you can figure out the prevailing of the block. And the, you know, the prevailing area and calculate that.
Ed, is that going to be, i- is that ruling, is that regulation still going to be in?
Yeah, that's
Exists when the code is changed, because I saw twenty feet on the new, the proposed changes.
That's prescriptive. There, in every area, you know, there's still the prevailing
I see.
allowance, you know, to help fit the neighborhood. So that, that's not going to change. And if you need help finding it, just, you know, contact me in the office.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Could you do a five unit? Scheme C, that's closer to the
It is.
It's only five.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of history to this and I think you've probably gone over the things that didn't work and it's good to be trying some things that hopefully will work, but I think you're hearing, you know, some of the comments tonight that give you hopefully a little bit of direction as to what, what get you closer to where we're, you're trying to get and we're trying to get.
So our next step is to do the, give you some visuals of the exterior. Start working on that and
It's massing, I mean, one
Of course.
For whatever challenges there were in the previous iterations. They were very thorough, whether we liked them or not is another issue, but they were very thorough, three dimensional representations of the building and what's massing. And that would be, well, as, as, as you did, right, as you did for Ashford Avenue.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, it'll be really important to see how this thing masses out from the, from the street. It's going to be maybe even the most important thing, so.
Sure, we'll take that next time.
Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so you do want to open it and see if there's any comment in the audience or online.
Yeah, move to open the public hearing. Your second. All favor. Okay, good. Thank you.
Denise, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, this is Denise Woodin. As the board knows, I live right next door at one fifty four Palisades Street. On the third floor, in third floor apartment where I've lived for over thirteen years now. You know, this is, I felt like, as much as I've been speaking out against this project for the past several months, I felt like we were making some real progress at the last public hearing and the building proposed looked fairly attractive and although it was not, you know, what I would have hoped in the grand scheme of things, at least there were some improvements, namely that the garage and the driveway had been moved over to the north side of the building. So my question, when I'm done speaking, is why have you not considered having it on the north side where there's much more room between that one fifty six and the building to the north of it than there is between our building and one fifty six? My other question is, what happens to the affordable housing units if you reduce it to five units? Not that I'm opposed to you reducing it, but to five units, but it's still going to be a very, very large building. So in my mind, it's kind of neither here nor there, whether it's five or six units, it's still a very large building. And if you lose the affordable housing, then that's like the one silver lining that was part of this project, not that I'd be eligible for either market rate or affordable housing, but at least it would be something. You know, and I was also very disconcerting to hear, and I apologize if I'm quoting you wrong, but here the architect say that she wasn't really familiar with all the concerns of the neighbors, which myself and my landlord have expressed over, as I said, many months. So I'm wondering if there are recordings of the past public hearings that the architect might listen to. So we don't have to repeat them all tonight. And I would also invite her to come to my apartment and hear my concerns directly and see out my windows and see what, how, what the impact is going to be from our point of view. Many months ago, Patty did come to my apartment when I invited him, I showed him, you know, what it was that I was concerned about. When you look out my window. And I know that my landlord, who's on the ground floor, has also made that same offer. So the offer stands and I really hope that the new architects bring themselves up to speed on what exactly our concerns are. Because, you know, frankly, I just, I honestly don't have it in me tonight to repeat them yet again. I know the board is fully aware of them.
Well, first of all, I want to say, of course, I'd like to know more about your concerns and neighborhood concerns. I just, I only mentioned that I don't know that much, only because I haven't spent enough time, period, you know. And I will visit you and I will get to know the neighbor, certainly would do that. But the first question was, why didn't we consider the driveway of the garage on the other side?
Driveway on the north side, yeah.
On the north side. I, I know that and you know, we, I'd like very much the way the, the driveway allowed us to put the stagger the units the way we have it now. So I, I could take a look at that. I don't know if you had previous schemes with that. Also, this driveway helps us to get a nice slope to the garage. But it's something we could take a look at, you know, I, I can't say that. We have not looked at all the options yet, but we could take a look at that. And the other question, I think, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? There were three items she mentioned. Affordable housing, yes. I think this is something we really need to talk about. Because I understanding is that we need one, four, five units. And our client feels that it's, he would, he feels there are two options. One is he could, he would like to know, the board would consider if he puts an affordable unit in, in the building next door. He owns one sixty four Palisades and he's planning to renovate and rehabilitate this two structures there. So he, you know, it's that's one consideration. The other is if that is not acceptable, there's possibility we might drop to four. Because an affordable housing unit is not easy to work with the financial analysis of this project, because there's only five units. So those are the two ideas that we're considering.
Look forward to seeing, you know, what, what makes sense to you and giving you a reaction.
Yeah, I, I have a question to the attorney. Is the affordable housing unit purview of the planning board a purview of the Board of Trustees?
In terms of what?
If, if, if they're looking for a waiver on the affordable housing unit to go into another building or they're going down to four apartments. If that waiver is granted, is that granted by the planning board or is that granted by the Board of Trustees?
No, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I mean, it's the, the Board of Trustees.
If it's four units, affordable housing.
There's not, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't affect it for the five. So the way to move into another building, so it would have to go to the board, just so you know.
Yes.
The neighbor has her hand raised again.
So, so that, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be competitive, combative, but let me get this straight. Your, he, your client is proposing to displace the low and moderate income people who live in the building on the corner, renovate it for what I assume will be more luxury or market rate housing and possibly do us a favor of putting in one affordable unit after displacing people. I, I, it's just, I, I can't even, you know, it's
Comments, comment should be addressed to the planning board, not to the architect.
Well, no, I think that if the comment wasn't what it just was, it would have been fine to address it to the architect, but I'll stop now.
Thank you, Denise. Well.
Since you're actually under the coverage, does the dish?
Technically, the coverage in scheme C, is this, because it's more than seventy five hundred square feet, it would have that additional deduction. So I, I believe there's a one hundred and fifty five foot difference, a square foot difference, correct?
I couldn't hear you.
So for scheme C, you're technically not under the required coverage.
That's right. The sliding scale says it's thirty two point eight percent between seventy five hundred and ten thousand square feet. And we're at thirty four percent.
So it's a hundred and fifty five square feet, but I'm just for clarification.
Well, I think you're learning the challenges of this project.
I think it's fine, personally. I think it's fine, personally, is the one feels like I've been so on the antagonistic side of this, I'm encouraged by this. I think soon, see, it's, looks like it's definitely promising. So, one other, if I can, Mr. Chairman, just, just one kind of, and then realize it may be too early to comment on this, but I'm just, this, the, the, I see that there's a, the one thing that Architectural Feature that you do show on the section in the plan of these are some decks on the front of the building. And, you know, I guess I'll wait to see, or we'll wait to see what that looks like in terms of amassing. And I realize the desirability of it from a marketing point of view, it's completely unprecedented on the street. There's no, and in some of the, some of the last iterations, the, the front of the building, it was very hard to kind of read the front of the building without reading these attached decks, and it changes the character of the building in a big way. And maybe you have a way to, you know, we can wait and see how you manage it architecturally.
Do you think it has to be, repeat something that's already on the street?
No, but I think if you look at the character guidelines, you know, there's a, there is a kind of building along that street. They tend to be pretty solid looking buildings with punched openings, and there's this, like, that's actually called out as one of the principal.
I'll make sure I'll look at it, I'll look at it carefully.
So maybe there's a way to make it so work that way, even if there's a kind of balcony feature. But I mean, you should look at the character guidelines, because, you know, zoning gets you to a certain point, but then at the end of the day, it needs to look like it fits there.
Of course, I'll take a look at that.
You're probably familiar with the street, but it's a good street to walk up and down a couple times.
It is, it is really nice street.
It's an interesting.
There's so much variety there, I think.
Does she have the character guidelines already?
I do, but I, I just need to spend some time, more time with it.
Working, okay.
Good.
Anybody else? Okay, good.
Want to adjourn to the next meeting?
Yes. We adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting, long favor?
Thank you, thanks for your comments.
Look forward to seeing you next, next month, or whenever you're ready to do it. Item number four on the agenda, 49 Clinton Avenue, public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new classroom building on the Masters Campus.
Wow, we're good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was lucky. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, deputy mayor, staff, see everyone live and in person, it's great to be here. Brett Schwartz from Zaren Steinmetz, representing the Master School. I'm joined by Ed Biddleton tonight. On the Zoom is Seth Marks, the project engineers, as well as the project architects. Seth, Mr. Marks is from, is from Masters as well. We're here tonight for the public hearing. We have been before your board for two pre-submission conferences, but since it's a public hearing, I'm prepared to give the same overview as I have at the last couple of meetings. So this is a new educational building called the Innovation and Entrepreneurship Center. It's a proposed engineering and computer science educational building on the Masters Campus at 49 Clinton Avenue. This is new building here with Esterwood off to the side, the Esterwood Mansion that's on the campus. This is a zoomed out view of the site, 90 acres, you're all familiar with it, ordering Clinton as well as Esterwood Avenue. The site is in the EI District, which is why the Board of Trustees has site plan jurisdiction. We're here to plan and board on a referral recommendation basis. This is a zoomed in view of the site, the orange rectangle is the location of the proposed building. We included this slide to show the, the distance from Clinton Avenue, it's about 500 feet from Clinton, so the building is really well insulated in the Masters Campus site, far from Clinton and far from Esterwood. This is a zoomed in view here. We also included a line of sight analysis from the residents along Esterwood Avenue, and this, this is the line of sight profile here and down below, shows that there will be no visual impacts from the residents along Esterwood, given the topography and the existing vegetation. We included the landscape plan off to the side here, shows the bio retention garden, which would be for stormwater, as well as some subsurface detention. Again, the engineers are on the call, they could address any of the technical items on stormwater. This is the landscape plan, there'll be ample vegetation surrounding the building to enhance the attractiveness of the area. The architects included elevations of the proposed building, these are the west and east elevations, I'll leave them up on the screen for a moment, so the public can, can take a quick peek. These are the south and north elevations. I should mention the architects, Marvel Design from New York City, has added some just refinements to the building since we've last here, the architectural design has advanced. So I'm really excited, I can just show you the next picture, which we haven't shown before, which is a realistic rendering of the building situated on the campus. So this is a, you know, sort of state of the art, new educational facility for, again, for students for engineering, coding, computer science classes. And as we've mentioned at the prior meetings, these are classes that are already offered at the campus, so no new faculty, no new students, therefore, no new traffic. We have submitted the full set of site plan drawings, I hope you all have now got them in hard copy and had a chance to review. Just a couple of sampling of those site plans, here's the site civil plan, we included a grading and drainage plan, and utility plan, and again, the engineers are on the call if any questions. So that completes our presentation, happy to answer any questions from your board, and I know it's a public hearing, so I'm happy to follow your lead if you'd like to be from the public at this point.
Given Marvel's history of systems thinking, is, is, in the building, are the systems visible to the students? I mean, can they see the, is there solar or mechanical systems, or, I mean, is that part of the education, or? Is that not, I don't think.
Well, I do address that. Yeah. Our intent, sir, is to make the actual project-based learning that the students do visible by using glass inside the building and also using some screens, so that when you are inside the building, you could see what is going on in the robotics area, even if it's two floors away. We currently do not plan on using solar in this building, we currently have solar installations on both Strayer and the Funseka Center at school. We did do a geothermal test, well, at this point, we're not going to proceed with geothermal, but we do feel like the, the, the glass inside and the video will allow people to really see the activity that's going on in the building.
Okay, I guess what I meant was the building itself, you know, the mechanical systems and so on, was, could be somehow part of the education, but.
It's an idea, I mean, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, it's already designed, so.
I think one thing that I was going to discuss with the board tonight is scheduling a site visit. I think it's, it's usually helpful for me at least to, to see, to see the site and understand this. I mean, I, I was up there this last week and looked around, and I understand where the site is, but, and I see that you had it staked out. Actually, the reason I was there was because I wanted to see where that tree fell over. I don't know if anybody else, anybody else saw it, but it's a huge, it looked like the most thriving tree, and then it fell over.
Well, it had been really pitching.
Oh, had it been?
Yeah, so it went from pretty much straight up to a really severe pitch.
Okay.
And so we knew it was somewhat in trouble, and then it fell.
You woke up one day and?
Yes, and the UBS man actually saw it come down, interested us.
It was amazing, I mean, that's it was, anyway, well, I think we will schedule a site visit. I know the Conservation Advisory people would like to, to be part of that, so that we'll do that before the next meeting.
I should also mention, we did receive the comment memos from Valerie, there are a couple of outstanding landscaping and lighting comments that we'll address before the next planning board meeting in August. And we also received the memo from Hans Office, largely stormwater based comments. Now, our engineers plan to submit the full slip for the project sometime next week, maybe even as early as Tuesday, I've been told. So all those stormwater comments will be addressed in the full slip that the village will have next week.
This is a public hearing, I'd like to move that we open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All favor? Do we have any, we, we may have somebody in the room wishes to speak, but is there anybody on the line?
Yes. Jen, can you hear us?
This is Jennifer, this is Jennifer Olson with Marvel, I'm just the architect, I, I'm here to answer questions, if I'm able to stay unmuted.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
James Driver, I live
His voice carries across.
But no one's going to be able to see him.
You gotta pay money for that. I live across the street in the big pink house. I've been looking at this, the project, it's, it's very interesting building, it reminds me of a building I worked on at Suzuki Dawson in May in Boston. We were doing a project in Colorado at a university there.
I know.
I'm curious, is, how much information are we going to be getting at the planning board level at these kinds of meetings? Is this the first time this has been presented? No, it's been presented quite a bit. So I'm way behind the curve on this, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
But the plans are all on the village website, so you can compare. You know, there's also, what you'd be interested in are all the, they've analyzed all the truck traffic and the routes of the trucks and the loading, loadout. No, you'd be, no, it's right across the street from you, so you're going to be interested in that.
It's going to be, yeah, they're going to build a curb cut right across from my front door, right?
No, it's, it's up, if you know, it's up the street, isn't it?
No, it isn't.
Isn't?
Oh, okay. My front door.
Okay.
So I was curious as to why they need to do that. I mean, they drive their trucks on my grass and over my sidewalks while they're doing construction, why can't they just go straight, straight across the curb and to the building?
I can't answer that, but I, perhaps these gentlemen can.
Does the curb cut, the curb cut goes in, and does it come out eventually?
Could, could I answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so, so that's something we require during construction, what we, what we have the, the builders create is called a track pad. So it's because the curb is already damaged there, you're going to have to take that out, so they're not jumping over, they're going to replace the curb and the sidewalk in that location and improve it. But in, during construction, there'll be, you know, a gravel track pad there, which allows, you know, for the tires of the truck to drop out their mud before they come out onto the street, and, and keeps them from having to go in the main entrance and down that huge slope. So that's, that's a necessary part of the, the construction project, and it'll all be repaired at the end.
And it'll be restored to what it, to its original, I've, I've heard that there's going to be a beautiful garden there, is that accurate?
I don't have the.
Along Clinton Avenue, I was told last night.
There, there will be a landscape plan, but the, as far as the sidewalk and curb, that will be restored new.
Okay.
This is, this is Jennifer, can you all hear me, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, great, this is Jennifer with Marvel, with Marvel, we're the architects for the project. I can speak a little bit about this. The scope of this project does not include any landscaping along Clinton Avenue. The landscaping is all around the perimeter of the building, which is inboard about 500 feet to the east from Clinton Avenue. But just as Ed Manley said, when we take out the existing curb to make our, our curb ramp to create this construction temporary access road, we will then, the plans do require us to come back and replace the sidewalk and replace the curb when we are complete, and so will the continuation of the existing curb material. I also want to make it clear that we will have a, have a fence, a, a, this construction fence, and that will be positioned far enough back from the sidewalk so that trucks will be able to pull in and sit between the sidewalk and the fence, so that they won't be having to, if there's a single truck there, they won't be having to queue weight in the road. So that's another important point to, to be known about, where, how exactly the trucks will be getting in to the, to the fence perimeter. And I, I would also say that the, that part of the reason for putting that, the road where we have is just for the safety of everybody on the campus, so that construction traffic is contained within the grassy area of the construction site and not having to co-mingle with the, the students and the vehicular traffic that is continuing to flow around the internal roads of the campus.
And we also looked at protection of the trees, because that going in that way misses the root system of the large established trees there.
You mean the weeping birch, the weeping beach?
Yes.
Yeah.
That one, that won't make it. That's not going to make any, I mean, the root system will be traumatized, and that, that'll, will lose that tree.
No, we were looking at being past the drip edge.
Yeah, I, I think we have the 18 feet clear that we need between the drip edge of the beach and then the next adjacent tree, which I think was, I, I don't remember if it's an oak or a maple, just to the north of that.
Right, right. So where are the trucks going to queue before they make that turn onto the new roadway?
Well, I, I think if there's, if there's any queuing that has to happen, it would, it would be along, it would be along Cochrane Avenue, and sorry.
Cochrane Avenue?
Sorry, 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 I think.
Thank you. Monsters has parked the, parked the trucks in my yard, the way you used to. Okay, you're going to queue on Clinton in front of the women's club, is that what, what you're suggesting? And in front of my house?
I
Is that right?
We haven't, we haven't talked about extensive queuing, we've positioned the fence so that, that, that there would be a space allowed within the, the property itself for at least one semi-truck to sit there. We haven't spoken with the contractors about if there was extensive queuing, which I think that they would probably do everything that they could to not have that happening.
For the board's just information, I mean, some of the comments that we've already submitted are requesting some additional information on the construction. So I think it probably would be best if the applicant takes a look at the queuing, and then also, we had some questions on the number of trucks that will be coming to the site during the construction period. So I think more information will be forthcoming to this board.
How long is the construction estimated to last for?
We're anticipating about approximately 15 months.
From groundbreaking?
Well, we hope from, from later this fall. From groundbreaking later this fall.
So 15 months to two years, roughly.
One, one thing I'd like to suggest, on the sediment erosion control plan, the applicant should dimension that, that distance beyond the sidewalk to show that there's enough space for one truck to queue outside of the fence. And you should add some notes to the plan regarding no queuing on the street. You have a long driveway, you're building with asphalt millings. Any truck queuing should take place on the site.
Sure. I, I think that's fair, and we can, we can certainly include that. The, the distance of the fence away from the sidewalk is already, is already listed. But we can certainly add the idea of the no queuing on the sidewalk to that, to that plan.
The dimension listed is from the curb line, so I would suggest doing it from the back of the sidewalk, make sure you have enough length there for like a 53-foot trailer.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Yeah, certainly. That's not a problem.
Wow. Another two years of trucks outside my house. Okay. I'm just, given what's happened in the past and things, you know, it takes time to build these things. It's a beautiful building. I support the energy and the effort that's going into this. I just have to live with it. You know what I mean? Is there any way you suggest I catch up, aside just looking at the plans on the website?
Catch up in what way?
The sense of the, the project, the implications of the project?
Look at the recording. Yeah, the, the. Planning board meetings are all taped. Are recorded, so you could look at the last two.
Okay.
Planning board meetings.
You could binge watch them.
I could binge watch.
You can skip forward.
Game of Thrones.
Skip forward to. Forward to this project.
Thank you. Okay, great. So what, what happens if things don't go as planned? What do we do?
They will admit.
I'm sorry?
Call Ed Manley.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Ed.
Sorry, Ed. Sorry, Ed. Don't want to wake you up, but there's trucks outside my, my, we can't sleep. We can't sleep. It's three o'clock in the morning, there's trucks. Hear that, Ed? Okay, you got the call? I'll see you in a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Call the police department.
Oh, call the police department. Thank you, guys. Let's have some fun.
Okay. Look forward to it.
And we do have someone else with their headphones. Patty, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Okay, um, I think it's great that they're doing this, that they're doing, continuing to make investments in their campus. Years ago, we were very concerned that they could be leaving at some point. There was a lot of consternation about what would happen with what's a beautiful piece of property in the village of, in the middle of our village. At the same time, I can understand the concerns that some of the neighbors have. There've been a number of construction projects and integral to some of that has been damage, as you guys already talked about, to curbs. And not just on the campus side. There's actually damage that's been done to both sides of Clinton. Particularly Mr. Carbond's, the front of Mr. Carbond's house. The curb almost got completely wiped out and there are significant water problems that happened. I'm wondering if they're gonna do repairs at the end of this, if they could actually take a look at fixing both sides of the street, it would be, you know, good for the, for the character of what's happening in the neighborhood. Thanks, that's all I had.
Patty, thank you for your comments. And yes, we will, you saw Mr. Bill nodding as those comments were being made, Mr. Chairman, so we, both sides we will look at. And the broader point is the construction-related impacts. We know we need to supply that information to the village. Valerie requested it. We'd already provided some. The queuing, it was in response to the question, there's not gonna be a line of trucks along Clinton, and that's, that's the purpose of the temporary road. And we'll provide all the information, Valerie, that you requested on construction-related impacts, which obviously are short-term, just during the 15-month construction period.
I actually have one comment. It has nothing to do with what you all have been speaking about in the last couple of minutes. I'm just looking at the, I didn't get to review this at the last meeting, so I'm, you know, seeing it now. And I'm just curious, the massing of this new building in the way that it sits with the old structures and buildings. It appears to me to be very massive in the section here with the plan. And I'm curious if it is actually really this big, or is it, how does it compare to the existing mansion? As far as massing and the, the height and the, and the closeness of it to the, to the, of the existing structure.
I defer to Jennifer on that one. Jennifer, did you hear that question? So the question was about.
I did.
Masking and, okay, great.
Yeah, if you, Brad, if you don't mind, can you back up one more slide?
Yep.
The one that shows the. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe even one more, the one that shows the cross-section through the whole.
Yeah, because that built, you don't really see a comparison. That's the one.
Yeah.
That's the one.
I think, this is the one that I was thinking of. The, the, what's deceiving about this in relation to Estherwood Avenue is that Estherwood is actually down a slope, the continuation of the slope from this. So it's, our, our building is, I don't want to misspeak as far as the exact height, but it is, I should be able to quote this, but I'm not gonna try to get it wrong. Our, our building is 56, 56 feet above the grade plane at the lowest end. I've not measured Estherwood Mansion, but I am fairly certain that it is, that is not taller than the tallest parts of Estherwood Mansion. I think that it, just because of the, the way that the grade slopes down, that it appears very tall in this section. I would also say, distance-wise away, we're about 120 feet away from the, the edge of the Estherwood Mansion. So there's a decent, a very decent buffer that's also going to be planted with landscaping. It's our buyer retention area, so it's gonna be very lush with, lush with greenery. That's in that space that separates the two. So I think it's going to be in scale with the surrounding buildings that are around it. It's two stories on the quad side, and then that, that goes to three stories on the north end, which is where I quoted that 56 feet, which is from the, which is from the roof, the roof ridge to the grade plane.
Which is basically the section that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to facilitate a site visit. Whoever, Dan, whoever wants to contact us and however you want to orchestrate the site visit, we're happy to accommodate. We'll respond to the comment memos. We'll provide the construction-related information. And what we would really like to do to keep advancing this, if it's okay with your board, is to, we would go to the ARB, HRB, to advance that part of the process, the exterior, the footprint, that's largely in place. We don't expect that to change significantly, so we would like to start that process with the HRB. Understanding, of course, that your board will keep your public hearing open. We'll come back to you next month.
Mr. Clime? Yes.
I think the building that I'm seeing in the plant, in the plans, is a beautiful integration and dialogue between the, all the history of architecture that surrounds the building. And with the, with the penetration and the openness of it will be very exciting for the students to really live in the world of that space, which I think is gonna be very cool. And I think it really sets off Estherwood, which is a very quirky building, deliciously with the, with the specific planes. And it's the way it orients itself in relationship to the space. I think it's gorgeous for me, for my taste.
Thank you.
You guys have to hire him to, you have to be their spokesman.
The one thing I'd like to do, Board, tonight is to pick a date for a site visit. I think it's always helpful, like others probably have been up there, but I think to get out and walk around and really see on the ground the relationship to other buildings and so on. Got a series of dates to see what works best for people. The first one is Saturday, July 10. Should be them.
I could do that.
What time?
Whenever you want it, in the morning sometime.
Morning's better.
Nine o'clock.
That's fine.
Yeah.
July.
I cannot make that date, but you should go ahead.
What's the next date?
I live on, live right there.
The next date would be Sunday, the 18th?
I can do that.
You can't.
Not go with the first one. The sooner the better. I mean, I can, I go up and down Clinton, right on Judson, I go by literally five times a day, I go by there. So you should go ahead with your, with your date, and I'll go over and down.
I'd suggest that you also invite the board for season, so there won't be one site visit.
And I'm gonna do the Conservation Advisory.
Yeah.
They, I know they want to do it.
Yeah. I just want to say include the board since we, we have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so if we do Saturday, July 10 at 9:00 a.m., is that?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
As long as everybody else is.
Where do we meet?
We meet on the site.
Okay.
And the site is obvious once you get there.
Okay.
I mean, it's staked out.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Yes.
Yes, you can, you can come.
I live in the neighborhood. I think this is the first notice that I, that I got.
The rules are you can come, but you can't talk, but that's all right. I mean, that's just the rule. I, I can't make it apply to your neighbor in the back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Public, I think this is the first. Right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, Saturday, July 10, 9:00 a.m. on the site.
And you're welcome to come.
Please, please.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need to adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting. All in favor? Yeah, right. Thank you. All right. Item number five, 11 Myrtle Avenue, public hearing for site plan approval for proposed full rehabilitation of existing house.
Yeah.
Feels good, right? Thank you.
This is Myrtle, this is Myrtle Avenue. It's a public hearing, so I'd like to move, we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Right.
I don't think you were here at the beginning. You just have to share your screen like you went on to. It should already be logged into the meeting.
Hello, my name is Greg Sharp. I'm the architect for the Munitz residence at 11 Myrtle Place. Myrtle Avenue, sorry. Am I doing this, or someone? Okay, I think we addressed a lot of the comments last time. There were some minor comments regarding the landscaping, and we had submitted a landscaping plan. I don't know, I don't think I'm controlling the mouse. Is there? Ghost mouse? Is someone controlling this?
Maybe Ed Manley.
Someone is controlling this. Okay, I'm really not controlling.
We have a different screen. There you go.
In any event, there were some minor issues presented on the civil side, some minor things that posed no problem for us to correct. There were some comments regarding the landscaping and just some minor comments about adding a note regarding planning board conditions that we added to the plans. Okay, so this is the landscaping plan that we had issued, plan schedule, and we had also indicated our lighting. We added the notes that were required to the lighting that is in compliance with the town regulations, as far as dark-skinned compliant, and in that. The house is a re-imagination of a, of a split-level house. It's a modern interpretation of it. The house is kind of on its own back there on Myrtle Avenue. And it's not very visible from the main street of Myrtle, but is kind of up a private drive that's shared by adjacent neighbors. I believe the neighbors are in favor of the project, and we're just very excited to get going. So if you have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer. Any comments?
Any comments or questions from the board, from the board? I don't know if we opened it, but I would move that we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. There was, the applicant was posing 11 light poles throughout the property.
Yeah.
Have you thought about reducing that, or are all 11 necessary for the property?
We would have no problem reducing the, the light poles. They're actually very low to the ground light poles because of the dark sky compliant, so we just put some and some, for some general lighting purposes. But I don't think it would be objectionable to remove the lighting or look at it objectively at that, at that, at that time.
The board might want to consider. I mean, there seem to be a lot of proposed lights for this single family.
How, how low are they?
They're, they're like off the ground.
Ankle level, or knee level.
That's right.
They're, they're, they're pathway lights, just to go around. And we would certainly not have a problem taking some out or reviewing that. That's not a.
The thing is about this site, it literally is, you go up a driveway and there's nothing on either side of it. And then you go to the house. So I don't think there's neighbors that are. I don't think there's neighbors that are affected by any lights.
Right, no, I mean, there very well might not be any neighbors affected by the lights, I just didn't, I just wanted to uh highlight the fact that there were eleven light poles with two lights on each one of those poles.
And then down lights that are hooded or?
Yeah, down lights, that's right. Dark sky and fine.
Thank you for putting that out.
Yeah. I think it's fine. We'll be able to see through there. It's pretty dark up there.
Yeah, well, that's the thing.
Pretty dark up there, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that hilarious?
There's nothing else.
Yeah.
Nothing else.
Is there anybody, any public committee, anybody standing by or? Okay.
Did that, no?
No.
There's nobody.
Okay, all right. Well, I would move, we close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
We have a resolution for you.
I do have a resolution, amazing, amazing. Village Docks Ferry, planning board, board like, board resolution granting site plan approval, property eleven Myrtle Avenue background, whereas Nathan and Margaret Moots are seeking site plan approval to undertake a renovation of one family house and install new patio goes on, whereas the planning board confirms that the project is categorized as a type two action under New York State and as it is construction and expansion of single family residents, whereas application received the following area variance, variances on May twelve, two thousand twenty one zoning board of approval meeting, five point five percent for lot coverage, point oh two feet for side yard setback, three point six feet for side, combined side yard setback. Wherein it goes through the meetings that they've attended here, the things that we reviewed. And whereas the planning board also reviewed and examined letters and reports, remember, and from the board's consulting engineer and planner, whereas planning board closed the public hearing on July one, and at the same meeting, the board deliberated in public on the applicant's request for approval. Now be it therefore resolved that the planning board, it is resolved, it be resolved that the planning board determines that the base, that it's based on the find findings and reasons, reasoning set forth below, the application for site plan amendment is granted subject to the conditions set forth below, findings. One, the planning board is familiar with the subject property in the general vicinity and has reviewed the application in accordance with chapter three hundred zoning of the village code. Two, the planning board has conducted an extensive review of the applicant's proposal and finds that the applicant has satisfactorily addressed the criteria for granting section three hundred dash fifty two D of the village code, including consistency with the village, village's local waterfront revitalization plan, however that fits in. Three, the board considered, among other things, traffic access, circulation, and parking, landscaping, and screening, lighting, natural features, and whether these elements will exceed the capabilities of existing municipal roads or utility services. Approved plan, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plan submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning board and at least A through M site plan and two engineering drawings, A A through E. General conditions, the following conditions must be met before the planning board chair may sign the approved site plan, A. The following language shall be added, approved subject to all requirements and conditions of a June three, two thousand three. Oh, June three, two thousand twenty one resolution, yeah. July one, you've got a new one. July one, two thousand twenty one resolution of planning board of the village Docks Ferry. B, the planning board's approval is conditioned on the, upon the applicant receiving all approvals required by other governmental approving agencies without material deviation from the approved plans and evidence of such must be submitted to the village building department, see the applicant must address to the full satisfaction of the village engineer, all outstanding stormwater and engineering issues raised in the hearings and documents submitted to the board, the applicant, D, the applicant shall pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with the planning board review of the application. To force an effect. I'm reading more than our council said that I have to.
You could call for a vote at this point.
I can call for a vote.
Those are sort of different, those, I would say.
Yes, printed differently, all right, all right, with the approved, with the approval and suggestion of the, of the um council, I make the motion that we approve as as stated, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I approve, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Gotta work on these resolutions. Okay, item number, item number six on our agenda. Sixteen Tierney Lane. Public hearing for site plan approval for proposed renovations, one story addition and roof deck.
Hi, good evening, can you hear us?
Yes.
We're on the screen, we're the only ones, I guess, who do that. Hi. Um, we are the architects and owners at sixteen Tierney's Lane. And um would you, we can do a quick presentation, I guess, to get everyone refamiliarized with it.
Have you, did you, have you been to the architecture and historic review board yet or?
Yes, we've already received approval from them and from zoning.
Oh, cool.
For zoning variance, so this is our last step before our building permit.
Okay.
Um, so we have uh, we're renovating and adding on to a small house on Tierney's Lane, which is, as you know, a narrow dead end street, um just off of Main Street and Docks Ferry. You can see on your screen, hopefully, um some photos of the house as it exists now. Um, we're planning to keep the existing footprint as is and renovate um the first floor and then add a second floor. Um, do you want to show the, the other side? Well, those photos at the bottom are the four sides of the existing building. Um, we are planning to, uh, we did receive some comments from the engineer a couple of days ago. And we also received the draft um resolution from the planning board, so those items, I understand, are um conditional for the building permit, so we'll incorporate that into the plans. Here you can see on the left hand side, the existing building, and on the right hand side, the proposed. The only area that we are proposing to add to the footprint, which would be the only additional um incurvious areas at eleven square foot triangle, which is the only area that we could actually add as of right, um with the, with the setback requirements. And um, you know, we can show the elevations. These are the four elevations of the building. The door, which is currently on the rear of the house, we would move to be on the front of the house on Tierney's Lane. And then take advantage of the views um to the sort of northwest, um, the river views. We're proposing, just as general massing, to have a stair on the east side and then most the bulk of the house on the west side. And um it would, in the end, be a one bedroom, one bathroom house, so relatively small. The footprint is four hundred square feet, the current house is four hundred square feet plus a basement, and we're, this is round numbers, and we're proposing eight hundred square feet plus the basement. So I think, um, if anyone has any questions, we can go into more depth, but that's the, that's the main gist of it.
Do we open the public hearing? No.
Okay.
Uh, this is a public hearing, so I move that we open the public hearing, all in favor? Thank you. Jennifer, we have any customers?
Um, no, nobody has their address.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the board have any, any questions? Anybody at the end of the table have any questions?
Could I, just the, the architecture and review board, did they have any changes to your design, I'm just curious?
No, they were quite enthusiastic about it, actually.
Cool.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Yeah, they're very happy.
Good, well, all right, all right, we'll be happy to, uh, I move that we close the public hearing, there's a second, all in favor?
Hi.
And surprisingly enough, we have a resolution for the.
Can I, can you just say for the record who the second was, I didn't close the video?
Me.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So we have a resolution of the planning board, um, the approval, whereas Nina Lesser and Stephen Cheng, the applicant, are seeking site plan approval to undertake in addition to and a renovation of a second floor in an existing one family dwelling. The property is located at sixteen Tierney's Lane, section block and lot two point eight oh dash forty five dash thirty, which is the project site. And the property is located in the B Broadway zoning district, whereas the planning board confirms that the project is categorized as a type two action under New York State DEC six one seven point five C, as it is the construction or expansion of a single family residence on an approved lot. Whereas this application received the following area variances at the May twelfth, two thousand twenty one zoning board of appeals meeting, five point five percent for lot coverage, nine feet, six inches for the left side yard setback, seven feet, ten and a half inches for the right side yard setback, seventeen feet, four and a half inches for the combined side yard setback. Five feet, point seven five inches for the prevailing front yards setback, and three feet, seven point two five inches for the rear yard setback.
For the end.
Congratulations. Oh, I don't have to read it, okay.
Just what's highlighted.
Okay. So planning board, now therefore it be resolved, the planning board determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for site plan amendment is granted subject to the conditions set forth below findings. The planning board is familiar with the subject property and the general vicinity and has reviewed the application in accordance with chapter three hundred zoning of the village code. Two, the planning board has conducted an extensive review of the applicant's proposal and finds that the applicant has satisfactorily addressed the criteria for granting section three hundred dash fifty two D of the village code, including consistency with the village's local waterfront revitalization plan. Three, the board considered, among other things, traffic access, circulation and parking, landscaping and screening, lighting, natural features, and whether these elements will exceed the capabilities of existing municipal roads or utility services. Approved plan, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plan submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning as follows. Number one, site plan, pool and architectural drawings by Nina Lesser Architects last revised May twentieth, two thousand twenty one. A, site survey, B, setback analysis, C, demolition plans, D, existing elevations. E for plans, F, reflected ceiling and electrical plans, G, exterior elevations, and H, landscape plan. Thank you.
We. Okay. Gotta get to the end.
Right, just second, so basically, commit motion or.
Motion to. Motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Good.
Thank you.
Gotta work on these resolutions.
To be in the cliff notes.
Well, I have to say. Was that this copy? Sorry, man. Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
We're gonna talk about the uh.
Oh, yeah.
The.
MDR two zone.
What are we gonna talk about?
MDR two zone.
Okay, so, all right.
So, um, I, you know, at the last uh village board meeting, um, the village board was still reviewing the MDR two, um, and they were looking at the public comments that we'll receive. And they asked for some additional review, specifically dealing with the overall coverage, as well as, um, they had some questions about some of the heights and setbacks, so we took a look at the uh proposed local law, and uh we are suggesting a few additional changes uh that would better meet the uh guidelines themselves, so when you actually look at the guidelines, and one of them came up tonight with the uh front yard setbacks, so the front yard setbacks in the MDR two zone uh requires a minimum uh setback of twenty feet. And as you heard the architect speaking tonight, that, you know, actually the prevailing frontage on that roadway is black. And so while your code does have, you know, that ability to come forth with a prevailing front uh front yard setback, you know, it was my recommendation, why don't we just lower the minimum requirement of front yard setback for twenty feet to fifteen feet, so that when an applicant is looking to, you know, like, for example, with this architect, looking to construct a new building, they automatically have, they're already in the range of where you find it might acceptable for the MDR two. Um, also, in addition to that, we were looking at specifically dealing with the um set setbacks, so you have two different setbacks that you're looking at, one is dealing with the third story setback of five feet. Um, in the table right now, it's proposed, it just has a note that says, uh, third story setback should be five feet. But in your guidelines, you start off with this primary frontage of forty feet, and then after forty feet, you're looking for, and the additional uh frontage would be setback five feet. So already you're looking at, if you have a larger building of a hundred, let's just say a hundred feet, forty feet would be at, you know, your whatever front yard setback. Then the other sixty feet would be set five yards back. Now, that would be for the first two stories, then if you add another third story, technically in the code, you have another fi- a five foot setback. So the question was, how does that five, that third story five foot setback really apply? Is it applied to all frontages, whether it's the pre, uh, the um primary or additional, or just the primary? And so it was decided to add and specifically note that that five foot third story setback would only be to the primary frontage. So then in essence, that the third story would just be setback five feet from the primary frontage. Um, and then, so we were gonna make note of that in the code, and then in the um guidelines, the additional frontage after uh building this forty feet, it was suggested to only go back one foot setback. And we're suggesting now to do five feet setback from the primary frontage. To allow for, the concern was that one feet, one foot with the massing of some of the buildings that you might find along the passage, you won't notice that visual change.
That's good.
So those are just, there are three minor um changes, and that's what we're proposing, and the revised guidelines do reflect those changes. And the local law will reflect those changes, which will be submitted to the village board next.
Good.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We don't have to take any action, we just.
We just nod, yeah.
Just nod.
So.
Thanks.
All right, we're, we're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you, sure, good to see everybody.
Yes, nice to be here, I mean.
You made it to the other side.
Our drawing, our drawing power is not what it used to be, I'll say that.
Well, they'll come back.